Hi, my name is Jen Shaver. I'm the Executive Director of Bromley East and greatly appreciate the time you took out of your busy schedules to come here today and to have this opportunity to connect with all of you. So, thank you so very much for being here. And I'll let Mr. Commander Dominikini.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Dominikini. I'm a commander with the Brighton Police Department. I oversee our Support Services Division. In that Support Services Division is a Youth Services Unit. And that Youth Services Unit fields, at this time, thirteen, sorry, twelve school resource officers. And that doesn't include two additional sergeants, then of course, myself, in the overseeing role. I apologize, I'm clearly not close enough to the microphone. I'm gonna do that a lot tonight. What we do in particular, maybe I can't do that. What we do in particular is we station our officers within schools within the city of Brighton. Most of those schools will have, in fact, all those schools will have contracts with us that establish MOUs, processes. All of our officers seek and find their way to national standards, NASRO, National Association of School Resource Officers, best practices schools. They work very deeply in critical incident response areas. They, in fact, has been one of our goals since we started building this program into what it is today, to make sure that they all become specialists in critical incident response. They participate in really frequent training. Actually, they'll do it more than a few times annually, even start working in with school security guards and SSGs. So, what they're intending to do every day with this training is to bring back what the best practices are for emergencies and emergency response within schools. We, I know I saw this in several questions, there's always the question, this comes up all the time about, you know, matrices and how we follow, you know, decision chains for this stuff. And truly, every situation is dynamic. And so, these individuals are trained very deeply in how to dynamically respond to varying and different situations that you'll find in schools when threats show up. With that, and as I'm doing now, I'm going to transition into just a really quick overview of what that looks like for us. Basically, what happens, and you all probably follow news around Brighton pretty closely, you know, the situation here at Bromley East Charter on Friday is not unique to the school. We run into situations like this, very scary situations for all of us across all of our schools. And our SROs respond in kind and following the same protocols in each one. And we try to dynamically adapt in order to create, facilitate a response that one, doesn't cause more trauma, right? And so, our SROs are trained very closely in how to try to address very scary situations in the least impactful way possible. What we're seeing lately, and the trends that we're seeing, I would say, across the country, but we're seeing it regionally as well, are national and even international threats against our schools. Some of these are randomized, some of these are pay-for-threat, like swatting type situations. Some of these are efforts to, I've seen from FBI bulletins, to destabilize US society from other countries, things like that, that are coming from all over. And so, as you can imagine, that's a lot of varying response that we have to put together, right? All this stuff is very different. But the commonalities that are in place in what we train our SROs for are responding to threats in a responsible way, while at the same time making sure that we bring all resources to bear until we can determine that a school is safe. And what I'll say is, sometimes we have a conversation about why are there so many resources here? It was a hoax, you know, we believe that was a hoax, we believe all these things, you know, are smaller, you know, and in most cases, that's how they end up. And the answer is that we don't assume hoax, right? And even if it is a hoax, or if it is a situation that doesn't bring an absolute threat, the nightmare scenario into your schools, I don't have to ask you guys, I have my own children in schools, do the kids feel like it was not as bad because we tell them afterwards it was not as bad? No, it was scary that day. It was scary for staff, it's scary for me, it's scary for everybody. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about our response, that you guys understand that we put a lot of thought into this. From my perspective, I've been in policing for about 21 years. I've been with the Brighton Police Department specifically in this role for two years. I worked for six years with the Illinois Attorney General's Office, the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, where I worked with the FBI Interpol, RCMP on child exploitation and trafficking and things of that nature. And I spent five years responsible for emergency and critical incident response at a major university. And so, what I'll say is, by means of wrapping this up for myself in this short introduction, is that I've dedicated my life to how we respond to the needs of children and their safety. And that hasn't wavered for more than a decade of my career. And I will tell you that we've worked really hard to put together a team that puts their heart into this job. And every minute that we're in a school that kids are scared, or frightened, be that a drill, or an actual event within a school, is given absolute 100% attention from our team. Will we ever do everything 100% correct? No. This is scary situations with really dynamic results. But I will tell you that the teams that we bring into these schools, whether it's a 27J school, or a charter school, they're all teams that work very quickly and work together and coordinate fast, and we work very closely with our schools. So, hopefully that gives you a little bit of an overview of where we come from, from the law enforcement side, and what Youth Services does at the Brighton Police Department.
Thank you so much. Before we get into questions, would you like to give a brief overview of the incident that happened on Friday? Sure, absolutely. And thank you, Commander, for that introduction. And we just want to reiterate the appreciation we have for the Brighton Police Department and the efforts that they, and the support that they provided us on Friday. It was incredible to work with them. They were very thoughtful in guiding us in every decision that we made. They considered children in that entire process and helped us to kind of calibrate our response in regards to what they know and their experience with managing these situations. And we are really grateful for their support. So, on Friday, as you know, that we've shared out broadly, is that a live round of ammunition was found by a student, and it was reported to a trusted adult. This ammunition was located in a hallway, and got kicked into a classroom. The adult alerted administration, who took action to address the concern in partnership with Brighton PD. This prompted a hold while Bex and Brighton PD investigated the situation. At this time, we can share that in total, three live rounds of ammunition were found within the building. No weapons were discovered, and we have been unable to determine the offender. And we know that when there isn't a resolution, a complete resolution to a situation, that often heightens our own feelings and anxiety because it doesn't feel resolved. And I want you to know, like, we feel that too. And we're committed to trying to continue to figure out what happened and who is responsible. We can only do that with credible evidence, and we continue to encourage those who may know something related to identifying the offender to continue to report those pieces of information through Safe to Tell.
So, we're going to break down the questions into broad themes. So, the first theme of questions that we have are related to emergency response protocols. And so, our first specific question relates to what investigative steps were taken, cameras, searches, K-9 alerts, and what are the policy limits on those steps?
Thank you, Rachel. I'll go through some of this. I will say that, just to preface this, I know Jen mentioned this earlier, but there are a significant amount of restrictions on what I can share. We have an active investigation that's ongoing. That investigation potentially involves juveniles, and for just a whole litany of reasons, it's unethical and inappropriate to share some of the details. And some of those details could compromise the investigation. So, as I go through, you'll hear this as a theme. I don't mean to reiterate it for reason other than just to address the individual questions as I go through. In response to this question, or at least this collection of questions, our officers actually engaged in camera reviews, locker searches, K-9 screenings, and several other methods initially. What our officers will usually do in these circumstances, and was no different during this incident, is they will actually engage in several different lines of investigation initially. Some of those, we believe, may or may not be productive, or not as productive as others. But when you're early in a situation, it's important to gather as much information as possible, right? Time is moving on pretty quickly, and it feels a lot faster when you're dealing with something like this. There are students in the building, we want to be really protective and move forward, make sure we have enough information to make the right decisions. Let's see here. One of the things that we will also engage in early on, especially if we have that initial sense of urgency, and this could apply to different types of threats, is we'll engage in really brief questioning with kids who we believe may have seen something that can direct us more quickly into something that needs to be addressed. So, that'll happen right at the onset. It's not, those aren't formal interviews, that's actually just really quick questions. Hey, somebody said that you may have heard this, did you see this because you happened to be in the hallway at the time, or we saw this on the camera? Can you tell me who I should be talking to right now? Those kind of conversations can really help us close the gap really quickly to be able to address something that might be scarier in a school. And in this case, it's no different, right? We move through different individuals with very brief conversations. Hey, we'd heard that you're a witness to this, can you help us direct this way? And then, as part of our process, then, we of course, follow up with parents, make sure that they know that we spoke with their kids about things. And then, of course, in this circumstance, for some, have more in-depth conversations, interviews with parents present as things slow down for us a little bit. For us, like I said before, our officers are always bound by law precedent, court procedures, especially governing civil rights, and particularly as it applies to children. Exceptions do exist for us when exigent life safety concerns exist, which you can imagine can be very important in certain circumstances. Courts have addressed the use of the safety sweeps in our processes and emergency searches repeatedly. There's quite a lot of precedent over it, and we train pretty deeply in it. And I urge anybody with questions about that to reach out to us offline.
Thank you. So, our next question, what are the confirmed findings of the ammunition incident, and how updates be communicated until closure without violating privacy?
So, for us, the investigation falls on the police department at this point. And consistent with our relationships with all schools, we always have very close partnerships. And again, I always think Bromley East has always worked really well with us during any investigations that we have, and same with 27J. But for us, we do have to bring that in-house, right? There's always an investigative component, and there's a lot of rights and responsibilities that we have as peace officers that we have to maintain. And so, that is usually done independently with collaboration as needed. For us, like I said before, the investigation is ongoing, and because of that, I can't share a lot of details until it's concluded. I will add that investigations can be delayed for a number of reasons, right? In some cases, we may collect fingerprint evidence, we may collect genetic evidence, DNA, we may be waiting for witness statements, or a chance to sit down with a kiddo to have a conversation. So, finding an absolute result, coming to a conclusion, can be a lengthy process, even when it's critical and important and scary. So, what I would just add is, on top of that, we don't always identify someone. We, I talked earlier about hoaxes and some of the other issues that we'll have from online sources. We just learned in, you know, Evergreen about radicalization and things like that that are occurring online. These things can come from foreign sources. We can have hoax calls and threats that come in, or even situations like we had on Friday, where we can spend a lot of hours working on these cases and still not get to walk away with a clear probable cause understanding of what has occurred within that school. Have a good idea, we usually have our theories, and we feel pretty good about it. But our job generally focuses on determining if a threat exists, and if that threat is direct, and if it's actionable. If that threat is direct and actionable, then we make recommendations, like we did on Friday. We try to make all, we try to exhaust every resource that we have, because my children are in a school somewhere, where there's an SRO watching over them in a different town. And that's an obligation that we all have with each other, is we have to do a thorough job. And I want to know that if my kids are going to school that day, that that police department has done everything they can to tell me and to confirm that they're going as safely as we believe we can make them. And I have to do that in return.
Next question is, what details can be provided about the ammunition and any related forensic findings within legal privacy bounds?
This is a brief one, and obviously, I'm reiterating again, but we can't get into specifics of the investigation. Any particular data that we have could be really helpful for us, and keeping that as part of the investigation until we can conclude things is very valuable. So, I don't have a lot to share about questions that go into specifics.
Question, what specific security measures are in place now and planned next, such as staffing, patrols, entry control, screening, supervision?
Oh, it's okay. We'll find it. All right. All right. Well, I will tell you that safety and security remain a high priority at Bromley East. One of the ways we ensure the safety of all is keeping specific response protocols internal knowledge. We understand that families, staff, and students may want specific information on our planned response going forward, or specific details around exactly what we do in response to an unexpected situation. However, we must be cognizant of what information we communicate broadly, as it can jeopardize the safety of our school community. So, for example, could you imagine the impact it could have if there's a person who is planning a school attack, and they know every measure we take to mitigate risk and respond in crisis? That's a hard message to hear, but these are the things that we need to balance and keep in our minds as we send messaging out to families. What we can say is that we will continue to have the ongoing support of the Brighton Police Department, who has been a fantastic partner with Bromley East. In fact, we've been in conversations with Brighton Police Department for over a year for our request for a full-time SRO. Actually, prior to this incident, I would say a few weeks prior to this incident, the contract was officially signed, and we are presently waiting for that position to be filled. So, we're really looking forward to having that full-time presence. We remain committed to learning and growing each day in our practice. As such, we will be conducting a review of our comprehensive response to determine what went well and what could be improved in our future responses. We've already received great feedback from all of you, as well as our staff, on just pieces of information, details that we could shore up, and we're absolutely committed to putting those things in place as we can. General information regarding school safety response can be found on 27J's website under safety and security. While Bex does operate independently of School District 27J, we do align ourselves to standard response protocols, and we consult with the 27J Safety Team members to coordinate crisis response efforts, as
So next question, what are the first student movement during holds lockdowns, recess, restroom, and how are exceptions authorized?
Sure. So in a hold, students remain in their classrooms and continue business as usual. No one is allowed in or out of the building. In consultation with Brighton Police, we did make a couple exceptions to our typical response, and will always consult with law enforcement or fire officials when doing so. We did have two parents presenting extenuating circumstances, and we chose to screen and release those students in an effort to be reasonable. In the event of an extenuating circumstance, Bex may use discretion. These circumstances may include a medical emergency, a critical medical appointment, or a death or tragic accident in the family. We also receive questions about why were some kids out on the playground? The hold continued until lunchtime for our kindergarten and first grade students. At that time, the firearms detection dog had cleared all common areas, and we want to include that our kindergarten through fifth grade students keep all of their backpacks in those hallways. No threat was identified among kindergarten and first grade students. Middle school students, who had not all been cleared yet, remained in their classrooms, and we felt it was important for our youngest students to have a minimal impact on their day, along with the Brighton Police Department felt there was no immediate threat to those children. Prior to releasing the sixth grade students for lunch, all students were screened, and the Brighton Police Department agreed that there was no immediate threat amongst this group of students. Seventh and eighth grade students remained in their classrooms. We continued our search in middle school, and once we identified two additional live rounds in a classroom, we adjusted our safety response. Due to the efforts of our cafeteria team, all of our students received lunch on Friday. Grade seven, four, five, and eight were served lunch in their classrooms. We really appreciate that team's efforts to make that happen. We acknowledge that while the community saw, what the community saw may have felt confusing, and we've reflected on our approach for future situations. We hope that the additional information above clarifies why you saw these exceptions, and any exceptions that we make to standard emergency response procedures will always be made in conjunction with police and fire officials.
Question, will implementing entry screening, such as metal detectors, clear backpack policies, or other changes to safety policies? If so, when and how? If not, what's the alternative?
Sure. So at this time, we will continue with our established safety policies and protocols. We know the best detection of threats within the school comes from building trusting relationships with students and ensuring they know how to report concerns. In this instance, these were the factors that allowed us to respond. Examples of measures that are already in place include, students are not permitted to carry bags or backpacks with them throughout the day. All visitors to the building are screened and must wear an ID badge. Additionally, our mental health team and administration engages in threat assessment training, led by a division of the Secret Service, to support identification of and response to potential or direct threats. When managing situations, we often consult with other trained parties to ensure a sound approach. The school may also implement individualized safety plans with individual students when a need to do so is identified.
So what did work, and what failed, and what concrete changes will be made with timelines?
Sure. So given the length of the hold, it would have been appropriate to give families an update stating we remained on hold and all students are safe. We 100% acknowledge that, that that was an extended period of time. We also are balancing that with making sure that we do not, we do not have people continuously coming to the school, because that also kind of can prohibit our ability to respond effectively or endanger more people. And so we agree that the length of the hold should have had more communication, and we apologize that that didn't happen, but we've noted that for future instances, and know that while the communication didn't come out, our efforts were 100% dialed in on those kids. And so we, but we hear you, and we understand the stress and the frustration and fear that you all may have been experiencing during that time. Communications to staff needed to include information shared with parents, and has already been adopted as a standard protocol going forward. Staff may need more training on what is appropriate to share with students in an emergency situation. We need to ensure student census information can be accessed in the event Infinite Campus or the internet is not available, and this process is presently being implemented. Families find it most efficient if all students can be checked out at one time during reunification rather than by grade level. Adjustments are being made in our response plan to reflect this. It can be confusing if exceptions are allowed to emergency response protocols, even when made in conjunction with police and fire officials. And so we acknowledge that that left lots of questions out there, and we want to make sure that we've reflected on that, and we're adjusting that as well in our, in our protocols.
So in what part assessment and emergency response frameworks does the school follow? Who leads them, and how are run, hide, fight, and other drills executed?
Sure. So Bromley East uses the standard response protocols as listed on 27J's safety and security website, along with our student and parent handbook. Students engage in numerous drills throughout the school year. We do two lockdown, 10 evacuation drills, which are fire drills, approximately one per month, two secure drills, a hold at least, and as you know, and we have received text messages and notifications throughout the year, we do find ourselves engaged in a hold from time to time, largely for medical reasons, but not always. So we do have opportunity to practice there. And then two shelter-in-place drills, which we use for events such as tornadoes, or if it's a hazmat situation. Roles and responsibilities are defined in our emergency operations plan for each emergency response, and all staff required receive training, including our incident response leaders. All lockdown drills are conducted in partnership with the Brighton Police Department, and debriefing is a part of our normal process. All emergency response leaders also complete required training, which I just said, and then in the previous question also mentioned that we engage in our required training regarding threat assessment protocols, following the training from the Division of the Secret Service.
How will parents in the broader community be included in safety planning, after-action reviews, and ongoing oversight?
Sure. So what we wanted to provide here was, you know, families can support Bromley most directly through the work that they do at home before and after a safety event occurs. Here are some specific items you can do to help us to ensure the safety of all students and help us expedite reunification processes in the future. Keep in contact, keep your contact information current in the Infinite Campus system and opt into all alert channels. Practice your family's version of a "don't rush the scene" plan, and identify who will pick up, who stays home, and who stays home to monitor official updates. Reviews age-appropriate safety expectations with your student, such as following adult directions. Do not go to school or call the front office during a safety event. Monitor official alerts, and only travel to the designated reunification site when instructed. Bring a government-issued ID and follow onsite signage and staff directions. Watch for school mental health resources, and request support if your child shows stress reactions. Share insights and perspectives with the school, focusing on what worked and what didn't work from the family perspective, and we appreciate the insights that you all provided and the questions that you submitted, and those who've reached out individually as well.
So we're going to go to our next section, which is actually related to communication, and questions about communications. Our first question, how will the school guarantee timely, accurate, and transparent parent communication during and after safety incidents? Format, frequency, who sent them, and what picture?
Sure. So for non-urgent or lengthier communications, we have a text limit of 140 characters on any text messages that we send. Parents will receive information via email. Short communications, those that can be communicated in 140 characters or less, such as alerts or reminders, will be sent via text or push notifications from the Bex app. This is a great opportunity to download the Bex app from our website, if you, if you remember that you haven't done that, maybe not here, because we know sometimes internet can be tricky, but when you get home, that could be something you can do. Urgent alerts, such as school closures and safety alerts, will be sent using text, phone, push notifications, and email. We acknowledge that phone notification was not used consistently to notify families, and will prioritize this feature for future safety notifications. In terms of timely updates and frequency, Bex' first priority in all situations is the safety of students and staff. Essential information that does not compromise privacy laws, operations, or an ongoing investigation can be shared with families as soon as we are able. We understand this leaves families receiving broad and somewhat vague information, which can result in feelings of anxiety or distrust. We understand that families did go a long time before receiving an update on the hold. We are limited to what information we can share during an active investigation, and also understand the feelings of families who wondered about the safety of their children. In reflection, as I mentioned earlier, we could have sent an update as time went on to notify families that we remain in the hold, and will continue to notify them when it is released. And as I mentioned before, we've noted this feedback as a part of our debrief. Messages are sent to the community through our final site messaging system, largely from our, we have some amazing office members who take care of that for us, and those messages may be from myself or Mr. Novotny. Usually, they're widespread messaging that we send out to grade levels or to the entire school community. What do we share? We share necessary information to those who need to know, in accordance with FERPA and other privacy policies to protect the rights of minor students, along with staff, while sharing school operations and policy, while ensuring school operations and policies are not compromised. As such, as I mentioned before, communications can feel vague at times, but we also must be mindful about the details we release regarding school operations when responding in crisis. Releasing specific response measures can jeopardize the safety of the school community, and we understand this may increase feelings of anxiety or distrust, but please know we're committed to being as transparent as possible, given all the areas that we have to consider. As situations arise, Bex will determine what follow-up may be needed. In any situation, if there is no new information to provide, a follow-up will not be generated. However, if there are outstanding issues in which a resolution is reached, we will communicate that information to the community. We note that there were some technology concerns brought to our attention on Friday. We wanted to clarify that our student information system, Infinite Campus, became inoperable, meaning it just, you click, and just spins. Nothing was going on there, which was not a fun experience. There were no phone or internet connectivity issues for school staff. A backup internet for office and administration is in place if the main internet goes down. So just wanted to clarify, our internet, we had no connectivity issues with our internet, but the student management system was inaccessible at that time. We installed a new bell paging system in 2024, and there are speakers in every classroom throughout the hallways and on the exterior of the building. We also have a portable speaker system, which we had in front of the building for staff and the police to use, and we will definitely be more intentional with using the megaphones to ensure all parents get the information that they need.
What does the staff and students do during an emergency, so everyone gets consistent, actionable information?
So staff are trained to respond using our standard response protocols during an emergency, and as we are able, we provide necessary information to staff to preserve student and staff safety. We have a variety of communication tools that are utilized depending on the situation. And while more information is often desired, we must continue to be mindful of not compromising an ongoing investigation or communicating too early in an evolving situation. Both situations can lead to panic or confusion, which may negatively impact our students and staff. On Friday, we learned that not all staff received the parent communication that was sent, as we had intended. This was due to an error on our part when sending the parent communication, along with crafting the staff communication that didn't link it back either. So when we typically send out those notifications via final site, we'll hit parents and staff at the same time. In this instance, we didn't do that. And we do try to make sure we're linking information that we send to our parent community into those communications we send to staff, and that detail was not executed on Friday. And so it will be our practice going forward to include parent communications within staff communications to ensure consistency with information. We appreciate the commitment of our staff to ensure a supportive environment for students amidst the uncertainty of Friday's events, as well as their efforts to provide welcoming, a welcoming environment for students upon their return. They did a tremendous job.
So our first question, what concrete revised procedures will the school use for controlled release and reunification, such as entrances, staging, multiple siblings, ID checks, backups?
Sure. So first of all, a controlled release could be used for a significant weather event or other emergency that prohibits students from leaving campus at dismissal time. Locations of controlled releases can either be onsite or offsite, depending on the situation. And at times, students may need to be evacuated before they can be released to families. And so our offsite reunification location is at Riverdale Ridge High School. In terms of communication, parents will be notified using text, push notification, phone, and email. We are considering, so students, if they have to be transported offsite, let me clarify, we have an MOU with 27J in which they will bus our students to another location, and parents will be notified should that ever need to happen. And they'll be notified through text, push notification, phone, and email. We're considering a website pop-up that notifies families that we're engaging in a reunification and to check their email for more information as well. Students are not permitted to use classroom phones to call parents, as these phones do not have the ability for parents to identify and call back to that specific extension. When students make calls from the classrooms, this often leaves parents even more worried because they can't identify who called and how to get back in touch with their student. In any situation, we'll follow some standard protocols, no matter our location. All students will need to be released to a trusted adult as identified as a parent, guardian, or emergency contact in Infinite Campus. All trusted adults will need to sign for each student they are picking up. Students may be released individually or by class, depending on how far into the process we are, and if there's a need for additional investigation or follow-up. Trusted adults will need to be prepared to take direction from the team onsite to navigate the process, and know that the process may shift if team needs need to adapt. Every attempt will be made to provide clear direction via email when the controlled release notification is sent to parents. As Bromley is a K-38 school, it makes the most sense for families to be able to request all children from one location, and every attempt will be made to execute that consistently in the future. Through this experience, we learned that despite our intentions to allow families to check out all of their children at once, this was not executed when the reunification process initially opened, creating some confusion and causing parents to have to visit multiple lines to request their children. This process was revised as time went on to allow parents to check out all students, no matter their grade level, when speaking with one person. Going forward, we will always aim to ensure parents can check out all students simultaneously. Infinite Campus, our student information system, became unavailable during the reunification process, and we did not have the ability to view the student census information at that time. However, we are grateful to 27J for providing this information to Bromley East, and to ensure this does not happen again, Bex has adjusted our practices so that we have access to this information at all times, should Infinite Campus become unavailable for any reason, or the internet.
So what support are in place for students and staff on Monday?
Sure. So we were grateful for Brighton Police Department for providing increased presence onsite. Our 27, the 27J Crisis Team provided additional mental health support that was accessible by both students and staff, and we provided a variety of resources created by our mental health team for our teachers to use with students during morning meetings, as well as short activities to build community throughout the day. Providing students with routine and structure also provides students with much-needed stability. They followed their normal schedule to provide that necessary structure and routine, and our mental health team has continued to provide resources to teachers and adjust approaches to meet student needs. They've really been working hard these last couple days to check in with kids and communicate with each other, utilize the expertise of other crisis responders across the district to come up with new and fresh ideas, and how we can meet the needs of the kids as the days, as the days continue on.
Monday, was the return to school influence by the October count?
No, this was not a factor. As mentioned in our previous communication, we did not receive any concerns from the Brighton Police Department indicating the need to close school on Monday, so we returned, as we would in any situation in which the Brighton Police Department would find there to be no concern. no concern.
The next section of questions are related to student discipline, bullying, and support. So our first question, why, there is some awareness out there, some social media, about an incident that took place a few weeks ago. Why are families not being aware of a previous incident between students? Why would that student not expel? Is there a connection to this incident?
As mentioned earlier, Bromley East will communicate with families when their child is directly impacted by an event or if a situation impacts the entire grade level or school community. We are bound by FERPA, which is a federal law that prohibits the release of student educational records and personally identifiable information to third parties without parent permission, except for in limited circumstances. This means the name, behavior infraction, disciplinary action, grades, individualized safety plans, attendance records, or other similar information cannot legally be shared with the public or unauthorized third parties, including other parents. Additionally, it is our obligation to preserve the privacy of individuals and only inform families in limited situations that may directly impact their child, a grade level, or the entire school community, and even then, only to the extent allowable by law. Decisions regarding the level of appropriate communication are often made in consultation with other advisors. We can share that the mentioned incident was investigated and resolved in accordance with our policies. We understand that many families want to be in the know, but we must follow the law with regards to student records and personally identifiable information, just as we would as if it were your child.
So how will bullying and violent behavior, reporting, parent notification, consequences, and removal or expulsion?
Sure, so BECS will always manage bullying and violent behavior in accordance with our policies. As a reminder, bullying behavior is designed to exercise power over another individual and is generally, but not always, repeated. Often bullying behavior is confused with mean and rude behavior, which are unkind or inconsiderate behaviors. Mean and rude behavior may be repeated, but it will not be considered bullying unless the offender is found to be exercising power over the other individual. Violent behavior can look a number of ways. In any situation in which violent behavior is displayed, our first response is to survey the situation, stop harm, and de-escalate so the appropriate measures can be taken to resolve the issue. Students are encouraged to report any behavior that is unwelcome, a safety concern, or a violation of our policies to a trusted adult or through Safe to Tell. Information on how to contact Safe to Tell is located on every student's ID, the BECS website, and posters within the school. Anytime a student is involved in a behavior incident that is responded to by an administrator, parents of the students involved will be contacted via phone the same day and as soon as practical. Sometimes contacts may be made later into the evening to ensure a same-day call. In some instances, larger notifications may go out to a group of parents or the community should students directly witness an event, or if there is a significant impact on a group of students or the community, as allowable by law. BECS consults with other professionals to make that determination, and often these communications are vague, to ensure we remain in compliance with privacy laws and policies while also communicating the need-to-know information. It is not reasonable, legal, or best practice to communicate every behavior event to the All behavior situations are investigated according, affording due process. Information will be gathered from the victim, the accused, and any relevant witnesses. Evidence will be reviewed and a determination will be made regarding next steps in accordance with our policies. In terms of consequences, as every situation is different, consequences for one child may look different from another, even if the action of the student may be similar. We must consider the circumstances surrounding the event, the intent, the impact, and the individual students involved, as we determine the consequence that is most appropriate for the event and the affected individuals. So I'm going to give you a couple scenarios that kind of highlight how that plays out. A simple example of this is to examine the action of shoving, which we all would agree is unwelcome and not okay to do at school. In scenario A, a teacher notices that student A shoved student B after a competitive play during a recess football game. The two students are friends. Student A is upset that student B interfered with his ability to catch a pass. No students were injured. Both students agreed to talk it out with a trusted adult and apologized. In contrast, scenario B, a teacher notices student A shoved student B into a locker head first. The teacher immediately intervenes, prohibiting further harm to student B. The students are immediately separated. Upon investigation, it was discovered that student B had been spreading rumors about student A through social media. Peers were making fun of student A as a result. Student A had had enough, and when confronting student B, student A was further insulted, prompting the physical response. Student B had a bump on his head, but no scrapes or blood. If we were to take the premise that we discipline based on an action of a student, the action of shoving happened in both of these situations, however, the contexts surrounding the events were much different. What we find when we, when responding to behavior situations is that they're often complex and much of the time, not a single-sided issue. Creating a behavior matrix focused solely on disciplining an action is not an effective practice. And so we wonder oftentimes about removal and expulsion of students should, should these types of situations occur. And so I wanted to let you guys know that our BECS policies outline offenses that are eligible for suspension and expulsion, but our, and our policies permit suspension for certain offenses while also allowing for professional judgment on when a suspension is used and for how long. Additionally, legislation has taken effect limiting the use of suspension for students in grades K through 2 and as a primary response for all kids. Research has shown when overused, suspension has had negative effects on students, further isolating them from peers and the school community, along with negatively impacting academic success. If a student commits a behavior that would be considered for expulsion, a case must be made and presented to an expulsion hearing for consideration by a hearing officer. If a student is found to be expelled, the student may not attend any school in the state of Colorado, aside from an expulsion program for the duration of the expulsion. Expulsions only remain in effect up to the remainder of the school year, and students may return to their assigned school upon the conclusion of the expulsion. Zero tolerance policies became popular in the early 2000s, but were found to be ineffective and harmful for students. At this time, the only zero tolerance policy that remains in effect is bringing a firearm to school, which requires a mandatory 10-day suspension and referral for expulsion in accordance with federal law. Our policy outlines a limited number of other significant offenses that require a five-day suspension and are eligible to be presented for expulsion. These include bringing a dangerous weapon other than a firearm, sale of drugs or alcohol, first or second-degree criminal assault, an act that omission, that commissions felony charges, and violations against staff that include false reporting of child abuse, assault, harassment, or any criminal act directed towards an employee. In terms of prevention, bullying prevention begins with creating a welcoming and caring environment in which students have a strong sense of belonging, positive relationships with staff, clear expectations, and consistent positive reinforcement of those expectations. As a leader in MEAS School, BECS is committing, committed to implementing lessons to support character development in all grades. Lessons include topics such as building and maintaining positive relationships, resolving conflict, thinking win-win, and circle of control versus circle of influence. We teach, practice, and reinforce behaviors that are in alignment with our sore core values through the use of the PBIS system, and many of you may have heard from your children how much they look forward to the BECS bookstore on Friday, expanding into grade-level hallways coming soon. And we create multiple opportunities for students to engage in activities pursuing their genius and connection, including the advancement of our buddy program into a school-wide initiative this year, which has been a great success, in which every student has a buddy in another grade. As we value making database decisions, BECS is deepening our practices to examine minor and major behavior data to note needs and trends, then developing a response plan to address the findings. We're proud of the work our middle school team has begun in this area and look forward to seeing the positive impacts it has going forward.
So questions related to what comes next after tonight and moving forward. Our first question we have is, how will the school balance safety responses with minimizing trauma and mislearning, and what mental health support will be provided?
Sure, so in any situation, as the commander indicated, one of the great things about our SROs that operate within our schools is that they have that great expertise of being a law enforcement officer and great care for children at the same time. And we appreciate their presence and their wisdom as they guide us through our response protocols. Our students practice all of our standard response protocols throughout the year to make sure that both students and staff are familiar with the procedures. Our first priority when encountering a safety concern is to ensure the immediate safety of all students, and then we will determine the best response protocol to achieve that immediate goal. From there, the situation is evaluated to determine appropriate next steps, and we always seek to respond with the lowest level of intervention first and then adjust as needed, considering the impact our actions have on all members of the school community. We also received questions about how do we manage mislearning for students? Our elementary students spend the majority of their day in the same classroom with the same teachers, and while students were not all able to attend specials classes on Friday, other learning activities continued throughout the day and remained fairly normal. Middle school students, though, had a much different experience as they remained in their lead classes throughout the day, which, and did not transition to other class periods. Our teachers did an amazing job managing the extended time with a single group of students. Unfortunately, students did miss the opportunity to engage in their planned learning for the day, and teachers are presently adjusting their plans to account for that missed day while continuing to move learning forward for all students. Anytime students are absent from school, they are allowed to make up work in accordance with our attendance policies, and many students can access assignments through Google Classroom. Bromley East does offer instruction in person during the regular school day and remote learning opportunities are not available, remote learning options, rather, excuse me.
So for our next question, what can you tell us about what school responses like will look like moving forward after today?
So we're going to continue to work with our staff, students, and families to rebuild our community. This is one step forward here tonight with all of you, and we have been working hard on that with our students as they've returned, as well as our staff. We're going to continue our mental health support from our counselors and assistance from 27J as needed. We're going to maintain our thorough safety protocols to support the safety of our entire community, and we will be conducting an after-action review of our comprehensive incident response.
So our last question tonight, we obviously have, I think you've been very curious to say about school safety, so how can parents help moving forward?
So, you know, we would love, as you all are highly involved, and we greatly appreciate that, continue to engage with your children at home. We need your support in helping our students feel heard and safe. Limit the spread of rumors. It is important that the facts get out there and take precedence. We ask for your cooperation in not spreading information that hasn't been verified. If you have new information, please provide it to the school so we can assist in this ongoing investigation. Bring questions to the school. We've had several people reach out with those questions and have appreciated that. We want to hear from you, and we value your feedback. We've, I've heard there's been several very productive conversations over the last couple days, and really appreciate the families who engaged in those conversations. That takes a lot of time. It takes courage to sit there and have those difficult conversations, and we, we greatly appreciate you doing that. Report concerns. We appreciate those who have submitted Safe to Tell reports, as those are fully anonymous, but they are monitored 24/7, and our administration, as well as law enforcement, receive those reports immediately. Reporting is one of the best ways for us to take action against potential threats to ensure that our community remains safe. As we close out today, we, I just want to sincerely thank you for your investment and want you to know we hear your concerns. And we, we, sorry, I just want to acknowledge that this event was not easy for anyone, and we hope something like this never happens again. And we know that you're here because you care, and we're here too because we also care. And we are committed to taking the feedback that you've provided, and we remain committed to doing everything we can to ensure the well-being of children each and every day. And so thank you so much for attending tonight, and please continue to reach out in partnership with us as we work through this and continue to work through this together. So thank you so much.